Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-agenda, sorry, dash wad.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSU TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Regentland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call, please?
Council members Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. And with that, if you could please rise and join us for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in its essence.
Thank you for that. With that, we'll move on to any verbal reports from council members this past week. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Yeah, so council member Brown and I, as well as council member Roach, were invited to speak with some members of the development community regarding street connectivity and some of the stuff that's been passing through the city council in the past, as well as through the Planning Commission. So we met with them earlier this evening, more follow-on meetings. Again, this was not established by council, but rather requested by the community. So I'm sure we'll have more discussions about that. And really, the idea is to come to a good understanding in the near future as we need to really set our street standards for the Road 68 North area, as well as the Broad North area. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilman Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, I had to attend the Parks and Rec meeting, which was very well attended. The presentations were very good. We had a long presentation by our former mayor, Matt Watkins, about the Quaddick Center. I know some of the plans I'd seen in the past didn't look really great, but I thought Mr. Watkins, he gave up some pretty good ideas, talked about the Snohomish Water Park and Linwood, I think the other one was. And at least they looked better than what I'd seen. So hopefully, we'll get something that Pasco can be proud of and our tax dollars. Hopefully, we'll go to work with that. And I think they talked about a preliminary 2025 in the summer sometime, maybe a groundbreaking ceremony during that. That was a schedule, but a lot needs to be done, a lot of lifting. And again, other than that, it was a really good meeting. And we talked about the master plan and a lot of other things that we could do to make Pasco a better place. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else wish to share? Councilman Serrano, do you have anything to share?
Nothing. Sorry, nothing here, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our item four, any, sorry, item five. Items for discussion. Item A on items for discussion is cannabis consideration for retail sales. And we have Director White leading, taking lead in this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. And council, of course, recalls that this was an issue of great amount of discussion this past year, 2022. The last time it was considered was in November. And now it's returning to council because we want to make sure, staff wants to make sure that we affirm the direction that a series of PMC code amendments is heading. Just as a way of recollecting what occurred in November, the sentiment that is recalled is that council is interested in allowing retail cannabis sales in the C2, C3, and industrial zoning districts, not as a conditional use, which is approved through the Pasco Hearing Examiner, but as an outright permitted use in those zones. We heard that there did not need to be Planning Commission involvement in the code amendments that would be processed, particularly in the zoning code Title 25, and that finally, there was no real interest in altering the current prohibition against growing raw cannabis or processing that cannabis into finished products. So the draft resolution is included in the agenda report. And if staff can answer any questions or provide additional information, be more than happy to do so.
Thank you for that, Director White. And so I'll turn it over to any council members for any questions, comments, suggestions. Councilman Serrano, do you have any comments?
Sure, I'll jump off here. First, you know, I saw that Deputy Interim City Manager, whatever Adam Lincoln's title is, that guy, sent an email that I forwarded. There were three articles that actually just happened to pop up in one of my apps. I hadn't necessarily tagged marijuana or cannabis retail, but I'm concerned about the trends that seem to indicate. One was, one addressed seeming an increase of armed robbery due to the cash nature, at least as it currently sits under federal regulation of cannabis retail stores. And, you know, then there was an element of, it appears that the industry itself is somewhat declining, at least from another article. But honestly, the third one was the primary concern, which indicates that marijuana usage is surpassing alcohol consumption for youth. So regardless of whether it's legal, regardless of whether you can purchase legally cannabis products across the river in Finley, or I believe in Kennewick as well, to me, again, it just, it's seemingly, it's an item of concern to allow these types of retailers within the city itself. So I'm going to still voice my opposition to this. I'm very concerned about that. I do question whether or not we've got the appropriate zoning. I do appreciate city staff for providing the updated maps. What unfortunately, and I probably should have asked for this earlier, I would love to see that would help me understand better the zoning elements would be an overlay of the two maps, the restricted zones, as well as the C2 and C3. Because it may be that quite frankly, it looks like overwhelmingly a lot of the C2 and quite frankly, almost all of the C3, with some exceptions, possibly that north of I-182 and the 395 corridor, may not even be permissible. And so it begs the question of whether we should just simply look at allotting this to the industrial zones possibly. So those are my thoughts. Again, I still want to state my objection and opposition, specifically seeing that, you know, the youth usage of cannabis is on the rise according to the article. I'm very concerned about that. And then I think we really ought to look at whether or not we want to, if this moves forward, limiting it to the industrial uses. So those are my general thoughts.
Thank you for your comments. Councilman Serrano, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney, you have some comments?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. I don't want to rehash stuff we've already discussed ad nauseam last year. So I'll just speak to some of the specific questions that staff is asking. So in terms of C2, if we were to allow it in C2, which I believe is what we preliminarily agreed to this last year, I would recommend that Peanuts Park, that we can reduce that buffer zone, certainly around Peanuts Park, and possibly some of the other parks around the area, Volunteer Park. And then there's a park right across the railroad tracks, which, I'll be honest, I didn't know was a park. But I think that if we were to reduce the boundaries on some of those, that would make C2 be much more, would allow uses retail sale and within the downtown region. So I think, if I understand correctly, Director White, the blue is the schools. And state law does not allow any reduction of zones around there. So those blue are set. And the greens are up to council decision. And so that's what I would be probably looking at in terms of what I'd want to recommend is adjustments to meet what we agreed to this last year. Sorry, one second, I'm just going to refresh myself. Director White, if that makes sense, what I said there makes sense to you?
Yes, no, no, that's correct. The schools are off limits for reduced buffers and parks are not.
Great. And then, because I think, I am not interested at this time in talking about anything other than retail sales. I think there's, maybe there's conversations we had. I do not want to have that conversation right now. And if there's community members that are looking for that, we can have a separate analysis of what that looks like. But that, to me, is nothing to do with the retail sales we're looking at here. So I guess the summary of my comments is if we're keeping in consistent with what we were, the C2, C3, I-1 through 3, that would be my recommendation, is we look at some of the downtown parks within the C2 area and the expanded C2 that has been proposed in the master plan. And we look at reducing some of the buffer zones around those to some extent to where it impacts commercial areas. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Just the two comments that have been made thus far, it probably would be helpful if I can pay back a little bit on to what Mr. White was saying earlier. We do have a few other things that we have to consider with this issue. The main thing, and I want to just make sure we're all clear on what this means, by not going through a special permit or conditional use permit process, the zones and the design standards and the traffic control, all the things that will, the conditions that apply to that zone will go with when you approve, or if you approve a particular zone for a retail facility. A special use or a conditional use permit process allows you flexibility to make decisions more precisely about what traffic you may want, what parking conditions you may want, and signage, those types of things. So that is the, and if council's not interested in that, that's certainly a council decision. But I just want to make sure everybody understands that you're going to get whatever is in the zone that's adopted versus being able to make those changes, make the Hearing Examiner be able to apply those changes specifically. So there's that. I do want to make sure you're aware of that. The other thing that we're going to need to address, if coming back with a new set of regulations, is we do have to address the collective garden issue. One of the things that we currently have in our code is no marijuana uses allowed in any zone citywide. So this would leave that open. We would need to make sure that we make a decision about whether we allow collective gardens, because currently, we don't have any of those uses. So that is something that we'll need some direction on as well. The buffer reduction was mentioned briefly. I do want to be precise and say that while we can amend the buffer down from 1,000 feet for this pretty long laundry list that comes in the statute, and we can minimize that down to at least 100 feet, except for elementary schools, secondary schools, and parks with playgrounds. So those are, that's the key, it has to have a playground. Parks, and I think that's what Mayor Pro Tem Maloney was referring to, is some of these parks, while they're generally included in the 1,000-foot buffer initially, council can reduce that and can reduce it from anywhere from 1,000 down to 100. So we do have a little flexibility there and being able to apply what those buffers might look like. And then finally, the other thing that, just want to make sure that we get direction on, is whether the council's interested in doing any kind of limitation on the number of stores. That is something that some jurisdictions have pursued. It hasn't been tested legally. It looks to be pretty sound, but that is something that would be out there. And I think, I tried to find, and I apologize, I could not find the exact same link that I had last time with regard to the amount of licenses that are currently, have been utilized and the ones that are still available. I believe that number, and I don't want to talk out of school here, but I believe that number is three and four total. So there are potentially up to four licenses in Franklin County. Those, I think the county ones could then come into the city. But I also want to remind council that there is another effort with regard to a program called the Social Equity Program, Cannabis Social Equity Program, which would, is a state program to essentially go and get some of the unused licenses and have those allocated for social equity participants. And we, it doesn't sound like, and we'd need to, it's still in flux and we need to do a little more research, but it sounds like that's something that we might not get a whole lot of choice on, that if we allow, if we haven't, if we don't have a ban, that's something that may, we might not have a whole lot of flexibility on whether it gets implemented or how it gets implemented. So, but again, that program is still in process and we're just now getting some information from the state about that. So anyway, with that, I didn't want to muddy the water, but we need a little more direction.
We have a comment from Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been chewing this over as I was reading the packet. I'm typically one for small government. I think that legal businesses should be allowed to, you know, apply for licenses and do business, as long as they're considered legal business. And I think that should be determined by the state and federal government as opposed to the city. But as I was reflecting over a lot of the comments that we've got over the last year on this, I think that maybe, and again, I'm open for discussion on this, that if we allow a special use permit, it gives some of the people who had reservations or hesitations a little bit more comfortability on decisions we make in the future. Initially, I was against that. It just didn't seem like it was something that made sense. But as I'm thinking about it, again, the community, I wouldn't say they're split. Again, I think the comment that I predominantly heard is in favor of it, but then where people are on the fence is the level of control and the unknowns. And I think that possibly going to a special use permit would help mitigate people's fear of the unknown.
Thank you for your comments. So, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Just to address some of Eric's comments and that last one, I would say that, Councilman Campos, my concern is that we'll end up with a long litigation, relitigation of our decision that's already made as a council at every one of those hearings. And I just think that spins up the community in a way that the Hearing Examiner can't receive most of the comments they're probably going to hear. So I'm not sure that that's going to do any more than continue a very loud dialogue of that doesn't allow anyone actual relief. Because the Hearing Examiner is going to be held to very clear standards as to what they can hear, what they can rule on. So my concern would just be that we're setting the Hearing Examiner up to get in a beating whenever that happens without giving the people who are speaking up any relief. I'm not deeply opposed to this. I started in the same place and then I went the other direction of going back. But I just wanted to just address that of where I was at. But in terms of Mr. Ferguson, we've just heard that there is apparently declining markets. So I'm not sure that there's a need to severely limit the licenses. So I'm not sure that there's any reason to step into that. I think the market's going to self-regulate here pretty well. So I'm personally not very concerned about that. I wish the collective gardens, or is that the right term?
They used to be, I believe it was, yeah, now they're, they used to be collective gardens and now that's what we currently define them, and they're now cooperatives. So we'd need to decide. That's something that is clearly identified in the statute as our ability to ban if we want. And I can give you some more information about some of those, because we haven't really talked about that much. And that was a new discovery as we were going through this process with the resolution, that it's something that had been banned all along. But we didn't want to be presumptuous and think that that would be something that the council would still want to do. But I can give you the quick oversight of what they are. If you, just give me a second here. So cooperative is essentially a medical, it's a medical cannabis cooperative. It's kind of the next generation of the collective gardens, but with more regulations. It requires, cooperatives have to be located in a domicile of one of the participants. They would have to, cooperatives may have a maximum up to four qualifying patients. The participants may grow up to a maximum of 60 plants and possess up to 72 ounces of usable cannabis. And none of the cannabis from the cooperative could be sold to others. So, and then clearly, the statute specifically authorizes, local governments are authorized to prohibit medical cannabis cooperatives under our City of 6951A250. So with regard to that, it was an interesting connection that we hadn't quite made with regard to if we do change our statute or our current code, we would need to address whether we want to continue with that or not.
Certainly, I've not thought about that at all. So I appreciate you bringing it up. But I missed it within the, I think there's like one line in the agenda report and I just simply missed it. So I'm not educated on that, so I don't know if I have an opinion.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to spring that on you, but it was something that we discovered, it just hadn't been part of the dialogue at this point, and realized that if we do change that complete ban language, that will open a question on this.
Personal grows allowed, is that something that is banned or can be banned? Because I believe that individuals have a right to grow.
No, yeah, certain medical individuals have a right to have a certain amount of plants, and that's not, I don't, we can't have anything to do with that. That's individual medical use.
So this is, in essence, and again, I'm just thinking through this, so I'm just trying to get some information for you. So this is just, is intended for, is kind of described as an extension of that? So one person's growing for multiple people instead of everyone growing at their own house?
Correct. So that, it's kind of a cooperative, I mean, it goes by that term cooperative, because I think that's a really strict definition of what it is. It's for, up to four qualifying patients that basically pool, so each one of them doesn't have to have their own particular grow, many grow operation. They can pool those abilities to grow into one cooperative domicile. But it, I don't know how successful it's been, but a lot of folks have declined to allow them.
Is there a limit to how many they grow?
Yeah, so it's 60 plants total, I believe.
60.
I would be very concerned about an odor issue there, potentially. So I'm not sure, anyways, I have not thought this through well enough. So I guess if I had to, if you made me vote tonight, which you're not making me, but if you made me vote tonight, I would continue the ban on those until I learned more. But, so if we have a chance to not drag this out and get answers on this, that would be great. But I don't, I don't have any real opinions on this whatsoever at all. I guess I need to do some research on this. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Ferguson, I answer your additional questions that you added above and beyond Director White's. I'm personally not interested in limiting the number of stores. I think the licenses have already done it. The market will take care of the rest. I have no opinions on collective gardens. And message well received that parks with playgrounds cannot be reduced.
Correct.
So that does effectively Volunteer Park as a, for instance. And may affect others, that may impinge on the, or that overlap with the expanded C2 zone that we might be looking at.
Yeah, and I think it really would, the devil would be in the details in terms of, do you limit specific parks? Do you want to limit parks generally that don't have playground equipment down to certain radiuses? It really would be, how would you want to craft that buffer reduction? Because essentially, that's what you'd be doing. And do you want to include the other things that come with it? Libraries. I could go through the list here real quick, but there's a lot of things that would come if you wanted to reduce all the buffer to all the areas that you could. It would include more than just the parks. Or you could limit it just to the parks if you want. That's something that you can.
My opinion is on that, just for what it's worth, for my fellow council members and for staff, in our no parking, I believe, ordinances, we're very specific about individual streets and block lengths, et cetera. I'd be interested in a list like that if that might be prudent. In this case, back to your council members, Campos's comment about making sure that the unknown is what makes it unclear. And so if you do any sort of blanket passing of something that could open doors that we weren't ready and we weren't interested in opening, that we accidentally opened. So having an enumerated list that we can expand or contract as necessary, to me, feels like that would be the safest way to go. But I would defer to my fellow council members. Certainly, Peanuts Park would be, I guess, the big one that I'd be suggesting that we reduce the buffer around.
So just so everybody's clear, you can reduce buffers down to a 100-foot radius on recreation centers and facilities, childcare centers, public parks without playgrounds, public transit centers, public libraries, and arcade game. Any arcade game where admission is not restricted to persons 21 years or older. I don't know what that would be, so.
We have comments?
All right, I think I've got all my comments.
Perfect, thank you. Councilman Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. I know I'm in the minority as far as on not lifting the moratorium on cannabis sales. I just want to say that I was in LA a couple weeks ago in the downtown. And what worried me is walking along the strip in Hollywood area. I mean, it reeked of marijuana. I mean, again, I could honestly say probably five years ago, I really didn't know what marijuana smelled like. But boy, being in LA, it was bad. And I'm just saying, the more you shrink in these parks, I mean, I realize right now it doesn't look like you can even put one in the downtown. I'm just saying, when you're walking in an area and it just constantly reeks of people smoking marijuana, it makes it not like where you really want to shop. And I know we're trying to save the downtown. The whole thing with Peanuts Park, city's invested millions of dollars. And again, I'm for small individuals, opening a business. I'm just saying, it's very hard to shop when you're smelling marijuana, people smoking nonstop in the downtown. Again, I'm in the minority, I know that. I wish it wasn't going through. But I hope that we would really be smart in how we limit this, and especially with Peanuts Plaza. I think it's a great new venue and I would hate to have a store right in the area. I know it's 100 feet they were talking about, but I'm just voicing my concerns and it's all I can do as a council member.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Milne. Councilman Brown?
Is also the argument continuing that it just, the store or the stores have to be in downtown Pasco? Because there has not been much more conversation about where else can it go to create better consideration to look at it as a retail? So is there a focus to just have it downtown? I mean, if that's conversation, that's, I guess, the elephant in the room for me. I mean, are we opening this thing up and possibly give locations, you know, maybe on the city limits or whatever that looks like? There's not much conversation about that other than the focus, from what I'm understanding, for it to be downtown Pasco. Why is there a need to have it exactly downtown Pasco if that's the case?
No, that's the one that we've heard consistently, with regard to C2. And I don't think that's limited, that's not limited to just downtown, but that seems to be the focus of that particular area and C2. But I think Mr. White can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think really, what we've heard is C2, C3, I-1, I-2, and I-3 potentially. So that's why when we started drafting a draft resolution, we realized real quick we should leave that whole part blank. So, because we just, quite frankly, didn't know. And there had been several different folks that had mentioned zones. And so we want to leave that wide open. But that's why we wanted to have a conversation tonight, so that when we go to drafting an ordinance, you know, we'll come back with a resolution that includes what the council wants and then we can draft one ordinance instead of five.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilman?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Was somebody else interjecting that I'm talking over? I apologize.
No, go ahead. I was just going to call you out.
Oh, thanks. I just, I appreciate what Councilman Campos had to say there. I do, and I had this position previously, I do believe there's value in sending this through the Hearing Examiner process. While it may raise the same concerns and the same pros and cons, at a minimum, it gives the people an opportunity to collectively voice their opinions. Whether or not it will generate new substantive dialogue, I don't know. But we spent a lot of time doing listening sessions on this. And then, you know, in addition to that, we also have heard from the public when we haven't spent adequate time listening to their concerns, like in the council district issue. So I think erring on the side of caution here, it would be wise to place it, an intermediate step in the hands of the Hearing Examiner, you know, regardless of where we end up here, on what zones are appropriate, if any. And whether or not the market dictates, that is certainly to be seen. But I do think there's value in placing a limitation, especially if we tie this back to limited zoning. So I think we should, we would be best served, or the public would be best served with a test case of one. So I think we should, we would be best served, or the public would be best served with a test case of one store in a given zone, whether we choose C-two, C-three or the industrial zones, I don't know. But that's, that's, that's my perspective.
Thank you for your input. Councilman Campos, you have comments?
Yeah, I just want to read it. I think, I think what Pete said is a little more eloquent than the way I originally put it, but that's kind of what it is. It's the perception that the public gets that they've gotten more input. Cause I, I, I'm of the same mindset as you, Mayor Protem Maloney. I don't know that anything would, you know, necessarily come of it, but you know, the public resolutely said that they have fear of the unknown. And if that's the case, I think this is a little bit of stopgap and it doesn't do us a disservice to put it in place, especially, you know, I got tired just listening to Mr. Ferguson talk about all the ordinances and zoning is. And so I think that this, this could be pretty complex and convoluted and, and having that extra layer with a hearing examiner taking a look at, at what is going on may help us in the long run. Again, I think you, you probably hit the nail on the head. There, there may not be very much value, but I'd rather have a little bit of value than, than not at all. And so I, I, I think it's worth putting in.
Madam Mayor.
Correct.
Yeah, if I could just to add, because I know, um, council member loves to hear me talk. But I do want to make sure that we, that one of the benefits that we, that, that there is legally, and it, it's certainly your call and, and it's not a, in any way a legal requirement. One of the, the legal benefits of going through a, a conditional use process is that whatever regulations you pass, one of the things that not only does the hearing examiner have to do in being able to apply some of the, uh, the discretionary items that would be allowed with regard to a particular site and traffic and those type of things. The other, the benefit of, of that process is that it'll, the hearing examiner has to find that the basics of your ordinance have been met or that your code has been met. And then that helps the applicant because once that's established, that becomes the status quo. And so it makes it much more difficult to make those arguments. If those are made at a staff level, obviously, then, then obviously we're going to be required to defend those and, and make sure that those are compliant, just in any case anyway. But there is that, that, one of the extra benefits of going through the hearing examiner process is that the hearing examiner would also have to find that the basics of our, our code have also been met. And then that, that makes it that much more difficult to try to challenge.
Thank you for your comments again. I, I think I have to agree with getting a different perspective. Just to make sure that we are covering all our bases. And like Councilman Campos said, whether that's just input, just a suggestion. But I think it's, it serves to get that perspective, that extra, that extra input to make sure that all our bases are covered. Yeah, you have more comments?
I just think the way I can put it best is, you know, our interests, we're not just looking at supporting small businesses and who are applying for these permits. We're also looking at the people, and we have to protect the people whose interest, they, they came out and said, no. They took time out of their schedule to come out and tell us, no, we still have to look, I'm trying to give them a middle ground, trying to meet them halfway. Um, because if this, if this goes forward, I want them to be able to say that, well, we were able to provide input and, you know, it didn't necessarily go our way, but we're able to get this. And so I, I think that, I think this is a good middle ground. Like Mr. Ferguson said, that this is a way for them to, you know, see if everything cuts the mustard. And I, I'm trying to think, I, I'm, I could be wrong, but I think there's been instances where the hearing examiner has actually found gaps in our code and says, well, I need more clarity. So in this case, this could be a, a good opportunity for us to figure out how well we did on our original ordinance and maybe we have to revise it down the road. I, I don't know, but I think that this is a security blanket.
Right. So Mayor Protem Maloney.
Yeah, less to say on this. I mean, what, what I think we've seen before is, for example, when they were, when there's looking at that school being built in the downtown region, the downtown businesses came out very strongly against it. They specifically told how they were going to affect their businesses and their future business planning. And those businesses and business owners left far more frustrated with the process because they were allowed a chance to speak and then felt completely rejected and unheard. And that's, that's, that's what I'm worried about. I, I hear the, the, the technical and, and other aspects, and so I'm not trying to refute those. I'm just thinking of on a personal basis, you come down there, you spend your time, you come, and you, you say how, how much you oppose this. Council's already made a decision. If the decision was to, was to repeal the ban, then it's, then it, then the hearing examiners might put some conditions on it, but it's going in. And if their, if their opposition is like Mr. Serrano's where it's very directly opposed to it and continuously opposed to it, then I think that they're gonna feel more rejected by being, by getting a chance to speak again without being able to be, to be, to be listened, to be heard without being listened to might, might be more damaging. It's, that's my only concern. And I'll just leave it there. I'm not deeply opposed to this. I understand the reasons why. And so if that's the consent of council, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. But I just, I would hate to see repeated things in the paper and other things where we now have, you know, rallies around this where we're, where they're, the hearing examiner just, that's not what they do. And I'm worried about putting that word on him. So I, I totally understand if that's, if that's where we're at, I'm, 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 I'm fine.
Thank you and appreciate that. And just before I turn it over to your comment, I think what I, and I probably did not clarify. My suggestion for taking it to the hearing examiner to get input from the, in perspective from hearing examiner is not to redo the whole process, not to redo the hearings and any of that. It's to get the input on how to best move forward. Making sure that any changes and edits that we do to the RCWs, to the PMCs, to the buffers and, you know, all these stipulations around moving forward with allowing retail cannabis, just getting that perspective. Getting that, here's what you're allowed to do, here's where you're gonna have struggles with. That was my suggestion on getting hearing examiner input.
Okay, uh, so a couple of things and I'll let Mr. White unmuddy the waters that I'll try to muddy here. But essentially, uh, what, that wouldn't be a role that the hearing examiner would take on in, in that situation. The hearing examiner is going to be very specific to an application and apply whatever regulations that the council passes, will make sure that those are implemented. Now, there's going to be areas that the hearing examiner will have the ability and discretion to make findings for particular situations. And that's the benefit of having a, a well-trained and competent hearing examiner. They're able to take the nuances of particular situations, which oftentimes are the things that folks will really focus on to be opposed to certain things. And then if those conditions can be ameliorated, if that's the right way to say that, they can, uh, those can be addressed through that process in a very specific way. Uh, it sounds like, Madam Mayor, what you're maybe referring to is more of a, a planning commission role where they would look at a general overall policy direction. But at this point, based on what I know, we've gone through that process and we're at the point now where we're getting some actual regulations. And it sounds like if there's some changes that need to be made down range, that could be something that maybe the planning commission's involved with that. But in terms of this round, it sounds like we're already past that point and we're really into how do we implement the, the policy that the council wants to go forward with.
Right, and I guess I said it wrong, but yes, how to implement. Yes, how to implement and again, the stipulations around the legal process of it.
Yeah, that's correct. So the hearing examiner will issue a, a very detailed, very specific opinion, which will be findings of fact, conclusions of all and, and conditions. So that will be crystal clear about how in any particular, within a particular applicant who meets the, the criteria, exactly what those conditions are going to be on that particular application for use.
Councilman Campos, you still have comments?
I guess it just, point of clarity, because I believe that, you know, Mayor Protem Maloney's points are head on. You'd see it time and time again, people come to planning commission or the hearing examiner. But what I think that people don't really look at, and I think Mr. Ferguson kind of touched on this, is if you can find merit. And a lot of times what people bring forward is, I just don't want it there. And that's not meritorious. You have to have something that says, your code doesn't allow this, right? And, you know, because of how complex it is, we, we may run into that, we might not. The likelihood is very low. I, I'm just saying that I think that people who get involved, the frustration is on them. And I hate to say it, but it's because they just don't take the time to familiarize themselves with our process. And an opinion's valid, I can't refute your opinion, but it, it doesn't have merit, you know, as far as our code goes. So it gets sticky, but I think, I think that this is the right thing moving forward.
Councilwoman Roach.
Question for Director White. If there was no hearing examiner process or special, um, special permit conditional use process, what, could you just describe briefly what a retail cannabis owner, how they would go about starting their business or, or where to pop up at? What, what does that look like?
Sure, I'll, I'll try. It would be just like any other retail business or any business at all. For that matter, of course, the, the big qualifier here though is they need a state license in order to open their shop. So once they had that, they would simply apply for a business license. The size of their store would indicate how much parking they need. Various codes and regulations we have would talk about signage. There would probably be input from our police department on their security plan, which we would ask for details on. And they would comply with fire codes, et cetera, just like anybody else. So it'd be pretty routine with the exception of the state requirements.
So let's just say somebody with a retail cannabis, um, business license puts on their application that they're applying for a C-one, which is not even on the table for consideration. How would that be prevented at the city staff level? I mean, would that application then be rejected?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so I think what the public needs is clear, defined boundaries from our council. And this is my comment to, to our fellow council members. They're not looking for extra bureaucratic steps that are confusing when it's already confusing enough to come to a council meeting and not really understand the process and what, what the civic process requires of them. So I think it's incumbent on us to define what that is and what zones those are and what those buffers are and just have it very clearly stated for them. Because there will be people who are elated about it and people who are hurt by this, so, or their feelings will be hurt by it. Either, either way, we make the decision.
Thank you for your comment. And you're right, I do agree with you. I mean, it's Councilman, uh, Ma- Mayor Protem Maloney said it, last thing we want to do is bring more process and bring a sense of not being heard. Um, Councilman Campos and Councilwoman Roach have mentioned it as well. My suggestion for involvement of a hearing examiner is to make sure that we're doing it right, to follow the process. But I do agree with you that I don't want it to be to where it creates more confusion about process or a, a sense of not being heard by council or by staff or by the process really. I'm looking for guidance here, really.
Sure. So, uh, so just so we're clear on what the distinction is and the question really that, that we need to get answered and, and so that we can draft the resolution to come back to you next week. Really what we're talking about is, do we want to draft specific enough code language so that it's clear exactly what, where these uses, where this use would be allowed? Uh, and, and I, and I think with regard to what the state law allows and what we could draft, uh, we could be pretty precise about where these would be allowed, what zones and what the buffers would be in, in terms of what the distances would be. Uh, that part, I think we can, we can do pretty precise. What we wouldn't be able to do precise through the code drafting process is really apply a particular set of circumstances that may or may not alleviate what would happen in that zone. And what I mean by that is site-specific. And that's really something that you're, that, that the hearing examiner would be able to do is apply the, the areas where the code is, has discretion to be able, in that zone, to be able to be more precise about sign. And, and let me give you some examples. Signs, that's something that can be very contested. Folks get, get very focused on that. Parking, that's, that's a huge situation. You're gonna be, if, based on the code, if you just go with, if you go with zones only, you're gonna be stuck with the general code. As Mr. White was alluding to earlier, you're gonna be stuck with your general code provisions for that zone. Uh, it won't take into account any particulars of this type of business. And we all know that, I think, or I think we all know that this type of business is unique and that it, it can come with its own unique challenges. So that's something that you would get through the conditional use process. You'd be able to have very specific criteria and conditions applied to that particular situation. Uh, and, but it does add, as, as Madam Mayor quite well puts, is it does add another layer of application. The one benefit, well, it does do that, but the one other benefit, as I've mentioned before legally, uh, when a staff person makes that decision, uh, and if that decision's challenged, we have to be able to show that, that, that decision was made properly and it wasn't made arbitrarily or capricious. Uh, when, because that's what the, the standard is for the staff level decision. That, that, that's the administrative decision that was made. When we go to the hearing examiner process, same standard applies, but it goes through a much more rigorous process and is drafted in such a way that it's legally, uh, much more, I guess, defensible because it, it has to state a lot more information. It has to make findings. When a staff level person makes a decision that, nope, sorry, doesn't apply, that's not a finding. Uh, that's, that's not a legal finding anyway. That's, uh, through a quasi judicial process. That's gonna be something that's gonna be done at the administrative level. So it makes it a little more difficult to defend, uh, but certainly not insurmountable. But it, that's one of the layers of protection that you get by going through a hearing examiner process is that you've already kind of gone through a semi judicial process already.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember.
Just a, a quick, because I really don't want to belabor this. It's been going on for a long time. What I'm hearing is a process, I believe I just heard. So if we agree on what you just explained to us, the definitive work that'll need to be done to truly break it down will do layman's terms and then bring aboard the hearing examiner. We would just need to agree to that process and we can move on from that point?
That's correct.
Okay, so, thank you.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
And just briefly, and, and just to be clear, what we're talking about is, what we're talking about is a special permit process for anyone who's applying for a retail cannabis license. That'll be an additional step beyond what most retailers, retailers would have to do. So just to be in clear, clear language, anyone applying for, for a retail cannabis license would need to go through a hearing examiner process. And that's what we decide, or they would not go through a hearing examiner process and be entirely staff driven. Is that, Mr. Ferguson, that's the summary of the two differences. There's pros and cons and, but that's, that's the decision needs to be made, right?
That was perfectly said.
Okay, um, I, I do not believe a special, um, special permit is necessary. That's my say. I don't know if we have a majority, so I look at your consensus here and give staff direction.
Yeah, we could go down the line and just say who's in favor and who's not in favor and that way get a tally and see where we're at. So we can at least stop litigating this point and then talk about zones.
Yes.
Well, is that, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, let's not do it that way, just because that tends to look like a straw vote and, and we're not here to actually take action on that. I think what we really need to do is be able to come back with a resolu- I think what we really need to do is be able to come back with a resolution. Uh, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but it sounds like we're really kinda teetering on whether we wanna do the conditional use process. Or we want to do uh just the regular uh use process. That's not a that's not a big difference in a resolution. That's why we're going through this extra step uh because that's not a big difference in the resolution. It'll be a huge difference when it comes time to draft the ordinance. So, between now and next week, I think that gives us some time. I can come back to you with a couple of different resolutions. Those are easy. Those are one pages. The the ordinance is gonna be a long one, so um so that's really why I wanted to have this discussion with regard to the resolution. Uh, we can come back with a couple of options for you. I think what's pretty clear, uh I think I'm hearing uh multiple zones, uh C two, C three. And and all the I zones. Uh, I haven't heard any uh any folks uh. Really uh say that that's that's a problem. Uh, there's the uh with regard to, it doesn't sound like anybody's concerned about limiting the number of stores. Uh, I haven't heard any uh any concerns related to that. Uh, and uh it sounds like uh uh we would not be interested in pursuing the co- uh the uh. Collective, it's a cooperative, excuse me, I couldn't think of the word, a cooperative at this point, so uh that's. I think if if that if I'm hearing that correctly, I think we can come back with a couple of options for you next week um with what we've got in that.
Mister Ferguson, the I I didn't hear anything from my fellow council members about any of the I zones or even C three. And so I'm just wondering if that it's a possibility to do the hearing examiner process just for the C two and apply that just there. Since that one is the one that seems to be the contentious zone. And that's a sticking point for everybody is what I'm hearing.
Okay, interesting, yeah, I haven't thought about that. Um, typically, that's not how we do it, just because it's based on the license, not the zone, but. Yeah, well, we don't like to do things difficult, so um uh.
I would be amenable to that as opposed to my my, the sticking point for me is for something that is a illegal. Legal business in Washington State and that we're we're looking as if we're moving towards. Um, you know, some uh permissibility of this in Pasco. Uh, not being discriminatory in our process and I feel like that's what. This will open it up to every single time somebody applies for a special or a conditional use permit, so. Um, yeah, that's where I'm at. So, if it's for C two, I'd be amenable to that.
Okay, well, we definitely can do it.
Councilman Milne.
Um, I just wanna clarify, you said no one was against limiting the amount of stores. I am against it, but if we had to have it, obviously, those little stores is possible, whether it's two or max three, but to have six, I mean, it's just. I don't know, it just seems way overkill, in my opinion, so again, totally against it, but if you have to, let's try to limit to one to two. So, I just let you know there is opposition, at least from myself and Serrano probably.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm in favor of that as well. Um, Councilmember Milne, I think it is does not serve us to have uh. Them kind of glob together, so um I know we've done this in the past in the planning commission where we've um. Required pawn shops or stores that are um, gosh, what are those resale stores um? Surf stores, yeah, consignment stores, thank you for the words, uh Mayor and I, Councilmember Campos. Uh, we've had a certain allowance within a certain number of feet of one another and so I'd be open to that as well. Yeah.
Um, Councilwoman Serrano, do you have any further comments?
No further comments, I'll just uh reiterate the points to clarify for Mister Ferguson. I did have an objection to the number of stores. My thought was one or two. And in relation to zoning, my comment about C three was given the heat maps that were provided. It appeared that it'd be most appropriate north of three ninety-five in C three and I one and I two seem to be. Fairly well away from uh parks, schools or other similar situated facilities. That we may, as Mister Maloney indicated, uh have a laundry list of if we have, you know, objectionable areas, if you will. So, yeah, uh I did have limitations both numerically as well as location based.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I just wanna add that it was not that it was um. The discussion did not go into um, there was no opposition regarding the number of licenses. You said four, currently four, up to four licenses currently issued maybe?
I hope my memory is correct, but I wanna say we were, we I think there was three that had actually been applied for and there was four. To that point, um, any. Unallotted, I think I'm using that right, the word that they use in in their um in their language, licenses. Uh, would go into this social equity program, I believe, how it's currently uh being talked about, so. Uh, the I guess what I'm trying to say is that fourth one might not be generally available. Uh, and it might go into the social equity program, so uh but I think there are uh three out there currently that have been. Um, uh, applied for and received but unused.
Okay, I think the con- conversation kinda just concentrated on on zoning and this other. Um, further detail. My suggestion, my my ask would be of those that are currently licensed. If we can just have half of that, allow only one or two. Um, I don't know that. Pasco doesn't need more than more than two. Um, my personal opinion. Um, I just wanna mention also, um, Councilman Milne, Council Councilwoman Serrano. Thank you for your input, thank you for your comments. Um. It's not that your your comments are not valid or um ignored. But the conversation of of lifting the ban and moving forward with retail has um. Been established, um and so do appreciate your comments. However, we're we're moving forward. Um, as far as the co-op. I don't have enough information on that. I would love more information. I'm not sure how I feel about. Having co-ops grow medical marijuana. Um, so if we can get more information on that.
I certainly can, yeah, and and I apologize, we uh uh came across that as a late uh surprise, so um but we'll we'll get some more information to you on that.
Any further comments from council? All right, does that give you enough direction?
It gives me a ton of direction, thank you very much. No, I I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Let me go back to my agenda on here. Our next item on the agenda is recommendations for Arts and Culture Commission for mural code. Revisions and we will. Um, Ms. Pichon.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Murals are allowable in the office and commercial districts currently. Defined by PMC Title seventeen of the sign code. The city has received feedback that the twenty-five percent limitation for murals is too limiting. An option for artistic and cultural expression, particularly in the downtown area. The Arts and Culture Commission was created to advise city council on matters related to public art and culture. Tonight, uh staff will provide a overview of recommendations from the mural subcommittee of the Arts and Culture Commission. I will also note that we have Commissioner Saul Martinez in the back, who I'll invite up after I give the uh brief overview. For uh his comments and also to answer any questions. So, on December second, twenty twenty-two, the mural subcommittee met to discuss these recommendations. The subcommittee outlined the objective of murals as to add the cultural heritage of the city through artistic. Enhancement of the environment, to make art of excellent quality, accessible to all the diverse elements of our population, including children. Stimulating intellectual growth and to create focal points for enjoyment of fine art. As the council packet highlights, there are three recommendations that came from the subcommittee. Recommendation number one was the removal of the requirements related to murals in the current sign code. And create the creation of a mural specific code, uh which is included in your packet tonight. And in summary, the uh mural specific code uh includes a nominal application fee, if any. To allow murals on all walls except address facing street facades, to allow murals in business, commercial and industrial zones. Allow up to one hundred percent wall coverage. And initially, it is recommended murals which contain words or messaging. Um, of any kind would be treated as a sign. That's currently in the sign code. Um, next line, recommendation number two was the creation of an arts and culture subcommittee to serve as an. In an advisory capacity to artists and property owners to review mural applications. As well as to advise on best practices, including but not limited to the type of paint used. Um, would like to with the paint to encourage longevity from the harsh elements and graffiti. So, making sure that they understand how to best, you know, protect the um artwork. The best surfaces to apply the paint to, offer different community perspectives on the design that they're um providing. Uh, in their application as well as a maintenance plan. And then the recommendation number three was the creation of a public mural program for the downtown area. Staff would work with uh the Arts and Culture Commission to develop a mission statement and objectives to complement the recently completed downtown master plan. This could look like the city commissioning murals or it could be some other type of program. Um, at this time, I'd like to invite um Saul Martinez to the podium for his comments, if he has any. And um we are both here to answer any questions.
Thank you. First the back.
Good evening. Um, first first of all, thank you so much, council and uh Mayor Agalisa Barajas. It's a pleasure to serve um the city of Pasco as a teacher, educator. Um, you know, and and now for PAC, uh Pasco Arts and Culture Commission. I really do uh appreciate the opportunity to do this uh art. You know, I I live, breathe, swim in art all day and so this in particular was one of my uh. Biggest focuses in joining PAC. It's just acknowledging that that the city of Pasco um had its limits to. Engaging um the masses in in having conversations about the, you know, what art has to offer, which is conversation. Um, so really, um, I I really appreciate the opportunity to revisit the like the current. Um, you know, current code, so, thank you.
Thank you. Comments from um Councilman Campos?
Uh, thanks, Ms. Pichon. I I can't stress enough how excited I am to see this happen. I know there was a building off three ninety-seven that I think had been um. It's got some artwork on it now and I don't know what's going on there. It looks like there's a cleanup effort or whatever, but there's like this cool stylized jaguar that's on side of it. And I think that prior to this happening, it would be considered graffiti and eventually taken down, which would be a shame, cause it's. It's a very nice piece of artwork and so um I just, this has kinda been a big thing for me. I wanna see. More artwork and culture throughout our city and I think if you've got, you know, open wall space and you've got approved artwork, I I'd be happy to. See whatever it is. Heck, I've got kids, Tom's grandpa can attest to this, I've got kids of graffiti. You know, my shed in my back in the alleyway, they just came knocked on my door and said we wanna put up a mural. I happy to do it. Um, but so anyways, uh just really eager to see this kick off and and keep moving forward.
Might I add to that? Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, thank you for sharing that, um, Councilmember uh Campos. Uh, I do want to differentiate between street art and graffiti, by the way, so the invitation would be for street art graffiti is obviously uh words. And that would fall under sign code, so just wanted to make that distinction.
So, we'll invite them to come and do some art. Thank you again for um um coming here, first of all. Thank you for coming and and um bringing this. Um, before I pass it on to our council members for more comments, um. This was a little bit of a challenge when I pushed for a mural or first mural. Uh, beautiful mural, but it did have its challenges and so. I agree, I have to agree with Councilman Campos. This is something that I've longed to see, that I've asked to see. And I just wanna say thank you to staff, to um for really working on this and and making sure that there's some changes. And there's a possibility to promote art. There's a lot of potential out there, there's a lot of um um. There's a a lot of opportunity for youth to refocus efforts. And um I use it for something good and educational. So, with that, I'll pass it down to uh Councilman uh Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. He kinda took some of the words I was gonna say, but uh I do remember one of our first retreats, I had a good discussion with Councilman Maloney about this. And I know we had pushed it forward and never went anywhere, so I will say thank you to our uh Adam Lincoln and staff. Were actually hearing us when you're very um wanting to see what other cities have, the art, the history, the the style that they have. And yet you bring it up and it just seems like it goes nowhere, so thank you very much for that and I. I'm getting real proud to see what you guys come up with and what stuff you approve and just making Pasco a more artsy, more. Lively place that you'd wanna actually take your family, so uh thank you for your service and also again, thanks again to the staff. I can't say how happy this makes me feel to see that after five years it finally comes up before us and uh. Uh, yeah, that's, on this part, I'm very happy, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Per Temboloni.
Thank you. Um, I can echo all the statements around me, uh but I won't belabor our time here, um but thank you very much. Uh, both staff and to the volunteers that serve us. Um, I do have some questions, so um. First of all, ask one about recommendation number one, basically where we're talking about um what these murals would look like, most of what you see up here, right? Um, what what was this consider, was this considering the whole city or was this looking at specific areas? I mean, I can envision all of this in, say, C two and looking at the buildings and the alleyways and such there. But when I think of, say, the Walmart off of sixty-eight, um, a full sized mural on that building would be large. Uh, very large and and maybe the and kind of our regional commercial uh buildings, may maybe, I'm not sure that we wanna talk about the same thing. And maybe it's just totally fine to have a a mural that big, you know, on 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 Walmart as you draft the pass. Um, but I I guess I was just trying to understand, was was the focus of the conversation um pretty much exclusively in the C two? Or was it really citywide, considering the different needs and and areas that we have?
It's an fantastic question, but I think we mostly discussed, you know, the business, commercial and industrial zones. Um, but my answer to the Walmart wall, why not, you know, it's it's what's the difference between a large gray or white wall? To the to something that may again spark conversation and and uh your, you know, your local school youth may have painted or or, you know, just a. Well-recognized artist, you know, so it just does give an opportunity to beautify spaces in ways we have yet to. Really process, um, and it's just opportunity.
Cause I guess where my my concern might be at that last bullet point of words or messaging, uh the word messaging is a very broad statement. So, some people um um in the community um sometimes use their use their platforms to to for messaging that I think, you know, might some of you consider hate speech. By others and of course, that line is very difficult to to evaluate um other than by a case by case basis, right? Um, and so the the more broadly um viewable that is, you know, you could be more much more attracted to folks who want to, who may be not local. Who may wanna put this to say a message that maybe isn't um isn't really the message for for Pasco, so. I guess I just want, I'd I'd want just a little more thought into what does it mean, what does it look like, um, not just in the best of cases, but in the worst of cases. Um, what we allow, so.
Sure, if if you don't mind me adding to that, I believe the purpose and intent on the following page kind of highlights. Um, what that art is meant to amplify, which is to add cultural heritage of of the city through aesthetic enhancement of the environment. Number two, make art of excellent quality accessible to all the diverse elements of our population, including children. Uh, I think we should highlight the children piece, uh thus stimulating intellectual growth. Create focal points within the city for the enjoyment and contemplation of fine art and enhance the stature of the city by defining its commitment to artists and the creative process. So, I think um with those, instead of being. Creating limitations, we wanted to create um almost the illusion, or not illusion, that's the wrong word, but like we wanna. Uh, we not, we we want to encourage um art that has. The right intent, the right motive behind it and and not, you know, something that that would be, you know, slander or derogatory.
I I appreciate that. Um, I just, I worry about enforceability there of what what the interpretation is, so that kinda gives me the recommendation too in my question there. Um, and it talks about an Art and Culture um Commission Subcommittee to serve as an advisory capacity, so I see the word advisory, I mean. That that means to me that they're offering suggestions and it's optional. Um, as opposed to mandated by our code that thou shalt pass through the Arts and Culture Commission. And so when we're talking about some of those various conversations you were just having, of um, it's written as advisory, which means optional. Uh, did was it intended to be optional or is it intended to always be passed through the the subcommittee for conversation and evaluation? And and to make sure that fits within those guidelines that you were just indicating there?
I can speak on that. So, the intent was that every application would actually go to the Arts and Culture Subcommittee. Um but their recommendations to them wouldn't necessarily be pass, fail, or reject, or pass. Um it would be giving that community perspective of, you know, talking through what the intent. Uh or what their initial design is, or what they're looking to do, and giving the three perspectives of. This is how I can take that as a community member, kind of trying to build that um conversation of, this is how I can see this, is this the true intent? So the advisory piece is more of talking with the applicant, um and giving them that feedback.
Great, I guess um so uh glass half full, glass half empty here, um. I I just, I guess I would, I'd want to make sure that there's some stronger bounds around that, um I would like that to be more binding, more of a design review committee sort of aspect. As opposed to a advisory group, intent's the same. The ability to enforce is what I'm concerned about, just in case we get some people going off the rails here, and advisory means I I. It means it should, not a shall, and when you, when I hear a should, it means that me as a as a as an individual can be like, oh, I can just walk away from that one. I don't want them walking away from you, so I want them, I want them having that healthy dialogue, I don't want them to have to have that healthy dialogue, so that's, I guess that's my my statements. Intent behind this is great, I I love what we have here, I love the direction we're going, I'm just thinking in terms of um, you know, people at the the margins that might be trying to. You know, push this wrong direction, I would I would love for for this to serve as a little more guide rails than that. That's all I got, sorry for bringing everything, the conversation down, I am excited, I can't emphasize enough how long I've been waiting for this and how excited I am to see this. Um so if we strengthen just a couple things here, I'm 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 all behind this, thank you.
I'll let Mr. Martinez go first, he's he wants to respond.
You could see my anticipation, so council member Maloney, I appreciate those words, and I appreciate your uh, you know, the concern, I mean, it's obvious concern, but um. But I think this puts us on the ranks with Jacksonville, um Austin, Nashville, uh New York City, Seattle. Spokane, Kenwick, I mean, uh you you can look around and and you could see that there is. Not much restriction and a heavy embrace for the arts, and I understand that the Tri-Cities in Pasco um has. A long way to go to really embrace the arts like many of these communities. But I, as an art teacher, high school art teacher, can see it in people's eyes when they're hungry, um so, you know, um limitations are great. But I think opportunity is even better, and I think uh it with the right wording, we can coax some fantastic art. Yeah, so I think that's, I'll add to that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for being here and to the PAC for developing this, um I feel like I'm in a little bit of disbelief. That we're finally here, um I'm really excited, I like all three recommendations. Um and was actually kind of settling on that, like why, why just one over the other? I I really do like the idea of having recommendation one and two as kind of a joint. Uh while informing the processes steps as opposed to one or the other, um and I think from just the. Uh an artist in Pasco, Jenny Riki, who once told me that there used to be ages ago, an arts commission. And then there was this uh statue that caused controversy of like a, maybe like a bust of a woman. Um but it was, to some, it was tastefully done, and to others, it was not so tastefully done, and so I think that's why the, having a. Uh kind of a advisory committee that is guiding or shaping some of that, so that we can. You know, not stifle the artist's um vision, but at least uh find what's appropriate for our community. So I would be in favor of that. Any further comments, Councilman Serrano, do you have any comments?
I think it's fairly well summed up, I think the one point of concern I have is just making sure that we apply some. Objective rather than subjective standards, as Councilman Roach just hit on the head, um there may be. Intended uses that are tasteful to some, but distasteful to others, so as I would like to see. If possible, in the final document, what these objective standards would look like. Uh to at least let us know that we're not going to potentially have issue. Uh with approving something, getting halfway done, and then, you know, the city's now enforcing something. Because there's either A, a complaint, or B, you know, council members go down there and we're like, no, this is not what we expected, right? And I don't foresee that, but you know, there's always that concern, because art is so subjective. Uh and unfortunately, as a regulatory body, we have to view it through the objective lens, so if if there's a way. The commission can put that criteria there, that'd be beneficial.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Serrano, um and I and I have to agree, um again, I'm I'm gonna pass back on this one. Working with the team, the small team that I was working with creating that mural, we bumped into several. Misinterpretations of what um the um PMC allowed. What I read and understood, the next person may not have understood the same way. I I have to agree that recommendation one is is the top of the list. But I will also add that we can kind of mesh both recommendation one and two. And like Mayor Pertim Maloney said, not have an advisory committee, but more of. An instructional, maybe more of a, I'm looking for the word here, um. A review committee, um the art that is submitted at the time of submitting the permit. Is is what is going up, right?
So a couple of things, I think we're we're kind of crossing a little bit of the wires here in the sense that. This is a a recommendation uh to, from what I understand of it, it's a recommendation to amend. Uh the sign code and remove some of the restrictions that are currently in our code. Uh and this is related to private businesses, private persons uh who want to use. Uh a particular uh location on a business to be able to display that art. The city's going to have a whole lot less to say about that uh than they would in, for example, and uh with our other situations. Where we are actually soliciting for art, and we can define what what kind of art we're trying to solicit, and and we can get a little more focused on that. This will need to be a content neutral regulation, so and the only thing that you're going to have to be able to limit something. Would be obscenity, fighting words, uh and uh incitement, so those are the, those are the hardest, tallest order. Uh to overcome, but there's not going to be anything that we can focus on regulation, that's why I think you see. Uh with regard to the the recommendations, that they focus on design, materials, size, uh the that those types of things. So you're already uh in that in that arena, so it's not like something that, it's not like a new exposure, but it is a. Much larger exposure, because you're going from a twenty-five percent to a particular, or potentially a hundred percent. Uh of something that you can't regulate, and um obscenity, as we all know, is is pretty tough to define. Just real quick, so that you're all clear, it would be works which, taken as a whole, appeal to the purient interest in sex, which portrays sexual conduct in a patently offensive way. Which, taken as a whole, do not have serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value, as deemed by the average person applying contemporary community standards. Good luck, that's that's a, that's tough, so my my point is, is that we're in the deep end of the pool on this, in the sense that. We won't really be able to get into content, we can talk about uh percentage of wall covering, we can talk about where. Uh we can, we can really talk about the materials, but uh once we get into uh allowing uh private folks to to display their art. It's it's gonna be real tough to to have any kind of say over what that looks like.
Right, and so kind of that's where I was headed to, I'm taking too long to answer that, but yes, um. Because of this particular mural, um I think the education portion of it needs to be. Here's what we're allowing, um you know, increasing the wall covers to a hundred percent. I'm gonna uh be honest, I struggle with that one, uh because the size of the wall is gonna determine, right, how huge that mural's gonna be. Even though it's a beautiful piece of art, it's it's gonna impact the whole neighborhood. But I do want to increase it from what it is currently, twenty-five percent. You you know, we can do better than that, I don't have a number to give you, I don't have a suggestion, but I would like to see. A bigger, a better opportunity for the use of the wall. Uh when it comes to um. You have on here removing, um sorry, going back to um messaging content, um. You just said it, we can't control the content, but we can't control the messaging. So this does not allow any branding, correct, any promoting of logos or. Anything in particular that could be construed by someone else as offensive.
Uh correct on the logo and the um the, sorry, the commercial messaging, that would go still with the sign code. Um and I will say that the three recommendations are not supposed to be exclusive of each other, they're actually all three recommendations. Um number three is actually for um the city to commission murals downtown, um so that as um. Mr. Ferguson was saying, the Arts and Culture Commission would be helping with that, working with the business owners and the property owners um to be doing that. And that would look maybe like one mural a year, working with, you know, the downtown to identify those key spots, um so that we can bring those forward.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, um Councilman Campos, you have some comments still?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm just, I I think, I think we should leave the hundred percent coverage alone. Um only because the regulation, as we're trying to write it, says that it's supposed to be culturally significant, regardless of how large the space is. This is supposed to increase dialogue, this is supposed to be something that that everybody in the neighborhood enjoys. But also, I I'm thinking of a particular wall on a building that we're probably all familiar with on Lewis, it's got some wording on it right now. Um don't buy a tool shop, it's a pretty big wall, and and I would think that any local artist who. Were to attempt to cover a wall of that size, they themselves would be limited on budget. It wouldn't be us, it would be self-imposed regulations, unless there was some sort of collaborative and they pulled their money, but. I mean, a wall of that size covered with something that was culturally significant. I'd love to see it, I think that the neighborhood would too, I don't think that it would cause any issues, so I I think that we should leave it as a hundred percent. And if somebody has a vision to cover a wall that size or larger, and they've got the budget to do so, and our buy-off, I'm excited.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any further comments or direction? Well, seeing no further comments, I think, uh and Ms. Pashon, you said this was. Recommendation one, two, and three, not one, two, or three.
Correct.
Okay.
So here's your, you're gonna need a little bit of money to do some art, and what you're asking for in recommendation three is going to be a budget allocation and adjustment somewhere down the line. To make sure that you've got the money to commission art, um and have the Arts and Culture Commission say, hey, artists, come make them cool for us in uh some location. So that that's the takeaway I got there, I'm I'm supportive, um and we've seen from the survey of the the people of Pasco, that the people are supportive. Of uh using public funding for big art projects like this, so I'm excited for that as well.
Any further comments, seeing none, I think we're gonna see this on our next agenda then.
Uh not quite, so um this was recommendations, we wanted to get the feedback um from council. Um what staff will do is um work with um Director White uh as well. Um we've talked a little bit about framework, potentially helping us draft an ordinance, um they're very excited as well. So it will probably be a little bit, um it won't be next week, but we will bring this back.
Thank you, I was just hoping to see it right away. But thank you, um yes, there does need to be extensive work done behind changing um uh all those nuances. So thank you again, and hope to see that soon. Thank you so much for being part of the commission and for contributing your effort, your passion. And hopefully, we can attract more people to be part of the PAC.
Thank you, this is very exciting, thank you.
And with that. With that, we will go on to our next item on the agenda, um we finally, finally get a presentation on the snow and ice removal. Plan, and I do want to apologize for that long meeting where um we did not get to enjoy the presentation.
Madam Mayor, would you mind if I gave a little bit of an introduction?
Do so please, I, my my paper copy does not have your name on there, but.
That's okay. I just wanted to mention that, as most of us know, that snow and ice removal is a public safety responsibility. And a critical and essential function of public works in our operations group. The goal and intent of the city's snow and ice removal plan is to mitigate a weather ev- events impact on public private mobility. Emergency and medical response times, public private schools, and on the city's transportation connectivity network. This presentation will show impacts of the twenty-one, twenty-two snow events, and show assumptions used to develop our current plan. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Tom Holmes, one of our, one of several highly respected and invaluable public works division managers.
Thank you, thank you, and welcome, Mr. Holmes.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh council members, uh like you introduced me already, my name's Tom Holmes. Uh I've been lucky enough to work here at the city of Pasco for two months shy of twenty-two years. So uh seeing a lot of people come and go, and a lot of snow events. So here, just some fun facts, um listed up here for you. Um our our crew that does the snow and ice removal, um they're very dedicated. And um they work all throughout the night, and um will set up different shifts. Running graveyard and uh regular regular shift during the day, if needed, we'll put in a swing shift also. We have over forty CDL holders. Uh that we can, that's commercial driver's license, um to call on upon if if needed, to come out and. Uh carry on some of these shifts, uh there's been some significant cost increase on the fuel. As everyone's probably well aware of, it's a pretty big deal. But, you know, it is what it is, it's cost of business, uh our main focus is the safety. Uh of the citizens of Pasco, uh and business owners and everything to get where they need to be. Uh the kids and uh getting to school and whatever. So here's a map, we got, we got our town broken into four different zones, uh. We we start from scratch every year, redoing the map, we'll reach out to uh. School districts for for one, the transit, uh fire stations, police, uh anything for public safety. And transportation, we reach out and see what's new, what uh what buildings are new. Uh what, if they've changed their routes, right, so sometimes they, the transit system will come up with uh new bus stops and whatnot. We include those in our mapping and in our thoughts of how we put this stuff together. So as you can see, priority one is emergency medical, schools and public transit. Priority two is collectors, public infrastructure plants and and our lift stations, it'd be sewer lift stations. Priority three is the neighborhoods. So uh. How we, how we go about this, we we monitor all all weather stations, uh local news channels. And try to come up with the best plan we can to execute prior to an event. Um this year, we, it's been a little different, uh we've had more of the freezing rain and stuff than we have snow. So with that being said, you know, our crew was, crews will go out and uh apply. De-icer material to the roads prior to the event, so. You know, it it's not an exact science, but we try to get it as close as possible. To uh be able to be the most effective and make our roads safe as far public. Uh and for for the the difference on the ice, we use different products, we got the ice slicer, it's a apex meltdown. That we, it's a liquid de-icer, we'll put that out prior, we call it pre-treatment, before an event comes and hits. Uh for the snow, we have uh ice slicer, that is goes in the plow trucks. And uh is applied, it's like a. It's like a clay-sand mixture. It prolongs the melting process of, of the product on the road and stays on the road longer. And in some, some cases, whereas pure ice, we'll go out with sand and salt. To where the traction is the immediate effect and, and the most need. It's also gonna be melting down, but you're also gonna have the sand to give you the traction so people can stop, right? On the hills and, and corners throughout our town. For equipment, we have four plow trucks. That has the sanders in them and the plows. Two road graders, two front end loaders, and four pickup plows. Those are kind of a new addition to our arsenal. That helps us with the lift stations to keep those clear. So if we have a sewer backup, whatever, we can get, the crews can get in and do the work on that lift station so we don't have bigger problems on our hands, right? Three de-icer trucks that puts out the liquid de-icer. And yeah, that, that's all we got on, on those anyway. So we, we try to team up our, our graders, put them out ahead of, if we can run them in tandem, a grader and a, and a dump truck. So we can cover a big swath down the road at one time. And the, the dump truck can apply product on the tail end of that. So they have traction after we get most of the road cleared with that swath. It's just a picture of where we store our pile of ice slicer. In the tank is the Apex de-icer liquid that I mentioned earlier. That's our storage. And the pile is under a tarp. That's the ice slicer that goes into the sanding trucks. Quick and painless? Is there any questions?
We're gonna have a lot of questions.
Okay.
We're starting with Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Tom. I just wanna thank you and your crew for doing everything you guys are doing. I'm sure that you guys probably hear this a lot, you know, from people who don't quite understand how our routes established. And, well, my neighborhood hasn't been plowed. Well, you're, you're in a cul-de-sac that's not off of feeder, so you're gonna have to wait a little bit, right? And so I just wanna thank you guys for your patience and your hard work. It sounds like, you know, a couple of years ago, we had really hard lessons learned. We were underprepared, it felt like, for just how much snow and ice we had three-ish years ago. And, you know, these budget numbers based on everything, it sounds like, you know, the level of overtime. I was expecting to see a lot more overtime. I'm glad to hear that you guys planned well in advance and set up separate shifts for this. So kudos to you and, you know, doing what we can with fuel overruns and it's, it's a tough time right now, but, but thanks again for, for everything you guys are doing out there.
Yeah, it all, all, all the credit goes to the, our staff. I mean, they, they put in the hours. And, you know, their family sacrifices so they can come out and do what needs to be done, so.
Before I hand it over to you, I did wanna make a comment and I was gonna save it for the end, but I'm sure you're gonna bring that up too, and you took my comment. It's the same question we get asked every year. Why not my neighborhood? Why other streets? And, and you, you mentioned it. I mean, there's a lot of misinformation or lack of education on why certain roads get cleaned up first and some just doesn't get there, right? So priority, and again, just wanted to reiterate the efforts that you guys are doing. Thank you so much for everything. Staff, Director Really, I see you wanna take credit, but it goes out to the staff. Mayor Pretend Maloney.
I'll be brief, echo those comments of what good lessons learned and how well it's been applied. And I, I can assure the public that's not, not my street either. I'm right next to, I'm, I'm right next to a school. The road's next to the school get plowed? I'm not one of those streets that gets plowed as part of that, so. So we're, we're all in this, we're all in the same boat together and it's, and it's about the safety, right? It's about safety of the kids. It's about safety of our, our response officers and such. I will say that the, the map online has been fantastic. I did a safety topic back in December and I was able to just bring that up and just show people, just like, here's a, here's a taste of what, what's available in the community to know where's, where's the best places to go. Well, look at the priority ones. Those are the ones that you wanna get to. You wanna get them as cleanly and fast as possible because those are well taken care of. So understand this because it's also for your own safety, so. But also stay out of the way of the, of the plow drivers. They're doing, they're doing their job for a lot more than just, you know, your, your, your personal benefit, so. Anyways, big kudos. We've seen it come such a long way. I think we were pretty, I think we, we received some pretty heavy criticism in Pasco for, for, for one of those. Not that Kennewick and Richland also didn't get their fair share, but now the comments I hear on the community are that Pasco's doing it right and now they're ripping on Kennewick and Richland way more. And I'm all for that every chance we get, so. You know, big kudos to the hard work and, and planning and thought that goes into doing this right and serving our community, so. Big thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's awful. Nice to hear, right? It's been a process over the years for sure. But I think we got it pretty, pretty dialed in and making it as safely as possible for sure. So thank you for the nice comments.
Any further comments from council? Councilman Serrano, do you have any comments to add?
Nope, just thank you to our staff.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Holmes, for your presentation and, and answering our questions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Sorry that didn't take an hour.
You know what? We were hoping for an hour. Thanks again. And with that, we'll move on to item six on the agenda, miscellaneous council discussion. City manager, interim city manager, Mr. Lincoln.
Whatever you wanna call me. Hey you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of items to go over. Today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so I wanted to acknowledge our, our blue team. Also wanna make sure that you're invited on the twentieth of January to the employee annual appreciation banquet at the Red Lion at, I think, six o'clock is what we decided was the time for that. And then also just thought it would be worth mentioning that we had a senator and representative both sworn in today that are Pasco residents and maybe that's something you all would elaborate on, but I don't know how often that happens for us. Probably the first time is my guess, but that's a pretty, pretty neat thing to be able to tout for our, our city, so. Senator Torres and Representative Barnard, so. Anyways, just wanted to mention those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Campos, do you have some comments?
Yeah, actually, I wanna add to that. There's actually a, a gal who is from Pasco who's also sworn into the twenty-ninth legislative district, Charlotte Mena. So it's, it's not just here. She's a transplant up there, but she's also got sworn in, so. Big kudos to our community.
And Ms. Torres and Ms. Barnard. Uh, Barnard, any other comments from council? Councilwoman Serrano?
No, ma'am.
Perfect. Item number seven, executive session. I did not get an email. No need for executive session. And with that, it is eight thirty-nine and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming in.